This meeting is open to the public and will be also live streamed. I'd like to thank those of you who are in the room with us today and acknowledge everyone watching via council's social media channels. I acknowledge the Aboriginal parties whose songlines traverse these lands we meet on today. The Western Waka Waka, Gaiabul and Jarrawa peoples have paid respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, for they hold the knowledge, rich traditions and bold ambitions of Australia's first people. First item is to address the attendance, including apologies, leave of absence, granting of leave of absence and declarations of conflict of interest. There are no apologies that I've been advised of. The granting of leave of absence, councillor Rebecca Von Hoff is requesting a leave of absence for meetings on the 12th and 13th August of the committee meetings. Is that so?
That's correct Chair. I'll be undertaking council business with the LGAQ policy executive on those dates.
Thank you for that. Need a motion that councillor Rebecca Von Hoff be granted leave of absence from the committee meetings of the 12th and 13th of August 2025. Mr Mayor and councillor James, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. There are no declarations of prescribed conflicts of interest given, nor of declarable conflicts of interest. Next item is to suspend, we need a motion to suspend standing orders. That in accordance with clause one, two of the best practice example, standing orders for local government and standing committee meetings March 2024. Standing orders be suspended for the period of consideration of item number four, which is the change application referable to the Hersley Road property. We have a motion to that, that effect, that standing orders be suspended. Mayor, councillor James, all those in favour? Carried. Thank you. The proceedings will be started by the presentation from our officer Jayden Forbes Mitchell. Beforehand, could I welcome our new CEO to the proceedings today, Sal Petracina, and our new GM for planning as well. Great to see you here. And the officers in attendance today, according to my notes, will be Joe Kirkwood, Chris Denherthog, John Daveran and Michael Evans. Maybe there's any changes to that, not too sure. Okay, ask Jaden to give the council's officers' presentation, please.
Thank you Chair and good afternoon councillors. This report considers a proposed change to a variation approval over land at Hersley Road Glenvale. The existing variation approval provides a town planning framework that allows for more flexible development than permitted under the current planning scheme. This means that any future development of the site must follow a guiding planning document called the Glenvale Mixed Use Centre Preliminary Approval Document, which I'll abbreviate to PAD, which aims to create a commercial zone similar to a district centre with shops, services and other mixed uses. If I could please get up attachment five, which shows the two precincts under the pad, which allow for a different combination of land uses. So this is from an existing variation approval that first took effect in 2016. There have since been several development permits for commercial development at this site that are given pursuant to the variation approval, but to date, no development has commenced on this site. Through this application, the following changes are sought to the pad. Firstly, to allow for a large full-line supermarket to proceed as code assessable development. So this is achieved by increasing the upper limit for code assessable supermarkets from the current 1500 square metre GFA to an upper limit of 4,050 square metres of GFA. The second change is to allow for a warehouse to proceed as code assessable on this site, where in association with the supermarket and having that maximum GFA of 1,200 square metres. This change aligns with the intention of the applicant to establish an e-commerce hub at the site to facilitate processing of online orders for home delivery. Thirdly, there's other minor amendments proposed to ensure that the pad aligns more closely with the structure of the current version of the planning scheme. If I could please get up attachment six, this is a plan that has been provided by the applicant showing conceptually how the site may be developed for a mix of uses under the pad. Now, this plan is conceptual and it's not a final site layout for the assessment of this change application. The application was required to undertake public notification and two properly made submissions were received, the issues which are addressed in the report. Critical to our assessment and interrogated in the submissions was a demonstration of economic need and impacts. This was considered in an economic impact assessment provided by the applicant and tested in a peer review undertaken by an independent third-party expert commissioned by council. The applicant's economic impact assessment concluded that there is a growing economic need in the main trade area for this site, for a supermarket, with low existing supermarket floor space provision, limited competition and rising population growth. Impacts on nearby centres, notably the Coles Glenvale, are forecast, which are projected would recover within three years of a supermarket's anticipated opening in 2028. Council's peer review accepted that while there may be some economic impacts to the Coles Glenvale supermarket and while some of these in the economic impact assessment may be arguably understated, there was still sufficient ongoing demand to support both the proposed and existing supermarkets, without materially harming centre viability in the locality. It concluded that although the immediate need was not overwhelming, longer-term demand justified the development which would deliver community benefits without undermining the centre's hierarchy. This report recommends approval, subject to the amended conditions provided in attachment three. This concludes a brief summary of the assessment. However, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Thanks.
Any questions councillors or comments? Councillor Tim?
Chair, may I move to reinstate standing orders and put the motion?
You, well, you can do that. The, I know the, the applicant is prepared to make some comments in support of the application, so it's probably proper that we should hear those, but.
Oh, I didn't think they wanted to say anything. Happy to, to work.
Any other questions? Councillor Trevor?
Thanks Chair. The land which is to the western side of the proposed development, what is the future use of that block? Do you know, or?
Thank you councillor through the chair. If I could please get up attachment four, which shows an aerial image of the site. So the site is highlighted in red there. So land immediately to the west of this is already developed for residential purposes.
Just didn't appear so on that other map.
Oh, sorry, which were you referring to?
Go back to the original proposed, that one there. See on to what would be the western side, there appears to be an area of nothingness there.
Yeah, correct. So that was at the time of, I think the base layer for that map was not developed for residential development, so.
So that's where my mistake is. Sorry.
No worries.
Councillor Edwina?
Thank you Chair. Just following on from that, do we believe, are our planners happy that there's a big enough buffer between those houses that seem to back right on? So if we go back to the aerial view, page two of attachment four. Yep, you've got houses right on that, that back line. Is there enough buffer between those houses and the development?
Thank you councillor through the chair. Certainly that's a valid concern and that would be considered in a future assessment of the application. As I stated earlier, the, the conceptual plan provided by the applicant is a concept only and does not necessarily mean that the supermarket that's shown on that plan will be in that area. If it's located in precinct two, it could be located anywhere within the southern half of that site. So it could be located along the road frontage with a large buffer to the west. At this stage, we don't know.
Okay, thank you. So it's all conceptual?
Conceptual, yes.
Yeah, fabulous. Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, I, I just clarify as to whether or not there are any submitters in the room relevant to this application. I don't think there were, there was. So I call, ask Paul Kelly to present on behalf of the applicants.
Thank you councillor and through the chair councillors. Just, I suppose, just to give a little bit of a history of this site. It's been before council since 2015, which is when we received the initial development approval to set it up as a mixed commercial use across that area there. And I suppose just to help out, the land to the west, where there's been some discussion about that hadn't been approved for subdivision at that point, but the land was zoned residential and subdivision approvals were happening. Since the, the variation request approval has gone in, and that's really to set up like a mini planning scheme across the site, we have sought already to get some approvals in place. So up in the top northwest corner there, next to the housing, there is already a development approval in place for a tavern with a bottle shop behind it. On the opposite corner, the north eastern corner, corner of McDougall and Hersley there, there's an approval for a service station and two drive-through food outlets. And then in the bottom south, southeastern corner, there's an approval for a childcare centre. This approval, this change that we're trying to make to the, the mini planning scheme that sits over the site is to increase the scale of the approved supermarket, which currently sits at 1,500 square metres. As Jayden said, to take it out to 4,000 square metres, the purpose of that is to facilitate down the track a future application for a Woolworths to go in. The reference to the warehouse that Jayden spoke about previously, the e-commerce hub there is to help with the latest trend with supermarkets with online ordering and, and having that ability then to do online orders from this centre here. We have certainly Gavin Dwayne from Location IQ, who did the original economic assessment for the site, has revised his figures to deal with a larger scale full-line supermarket going in here. And that has shown that there was not going to be a detrimental impact on the other centres. That's not just Glenvale Coles, that looks at Wyalla Plaza, it's looked at Wilsonton, Clifford Gardens, it's looked at some of the smaller supermarkets as well. And that came out of a peer review that council had asked for. We did a far more rigorous assessment, not only just of what the current trade is for current supermarkets, but what might that look like if this whole site was developed as a centre? And those figures have turned around and shown that we're not going to cause any detrimental impact to existing centres. So that conceptual plan that you saw there before, that will form the part of future development applications. So concerns about buffering or noise assessments or traffic and so on will get looked at as those future applications come before council. This is really just to ensure that we can apply for a supermarket of that, the full-line supermarket scale. And that then will form a subsequent application for councillors to look at. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? If councillors wish to hear from Gavin as well, might indicate, but otherwise, there are no questions? Okay, no, thank you Paul. Thank you. So accordingly, the, we need to reinstate standing orders, need a motion to that effect. Councillor Tim, councillor Rebecca, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. So the motion is that the change application, other change for preliminary approval for material change of use impact variation approval, section 242 preliminary approval under repealed Sustainable Planning Act 2009. located at 202216 Hersley Road and 218224 Hersley Road, Benvale, Queensland 4350. Are being approved under under repealed Sustainable Planning Act Two, oh, sorry, pursuant to the provisions of section 82 of the Planning Act 2016 and subject to the conditions in Attachment Three. Somebody to, a councillor to move that to that effect, councillor Tim, seconded councillor Gary. Any discussion, debate? All those in favour? Carry, thank you. We might just have a couple of minutes break between now and the, the next one, if we could. That we suspend, yeah, that we suspend standing orders for item number six. The motion is that in accordance with clause one, two of best practice example, standing orders for local government and standing committee meetings, March 2024, standing orders be suspended for the period of consideration of item number six. The officer presenting, this is Rupa Saka, and who is on, who is on deck to, to, to do that.
Chair, happy to move to, happy to move in accordance with your motion.
Oh, sorry, yes, yeah, that was the motion I read out that, that's required, somebody to move that. Mayor and councillor Melissa, all those in favour? Carry, thank you. Sorry about that. We have Rupa to, to present the officer's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon councillors, fellow officers and everyone present here today. Today, we are considering a development application for reconfiguring a lot to subdivide a vacant lot into 48 new residential lots at Garry Thilgonda Road, Garry Junction. Can you please have the attachment four figure D open to just see the development, the proposal? Figure D, attachment four figure D. Yes, that's the proposal. The proposed residential lots range in size from 2,500 metre squares to 6,510 metre squares, along with a 4,000 metre square drainage lot for stormwater management purposes. The site is located within the rural residential zone, specifically within the 4,000 metre square minimum precinct. The development sites adjoins rural residential development to the east and west. Can we please have attachment four figure A open? Up these? Yes, so that shows that. In terms of how the development will roll out, it will be established in two stages. Stage one will deliver 28 lots and a drainage lot with road connections to Falmonger Street, Commonwealth Crescent and a new cul-de-sac. Stage two will add the remaining 20 lots and extend the road further north to connecting with Panorama Crescent. Each lot will be connected to council's water supply and urban services, including electricity and telecommunications, but will rely on onsite wastewater system, which is consistent with the area's infrastructure pattern being predominantly unsuited rural residential lots. Stormwater will be managed through a combination of internal road networks and inter-allotments on-site stormwater drainage easements. Key matters in the assessments were the lot sizes and the stormwater impacts of the proposed developments. In relation to stormwater, the original detention basin design has been found to be undersized and does not comply with the requirements of Queensland Urban Drainage Manual. To resolve this and make sure that the system is both compliant and safe for the community, it's recommended that two of the proposed residential lots be removed and allocated for stormwater detention to achieve compliance with the Queensland Urban Drainage Manual and to ensure community safety. In terms of lot sizes, the site sits within the 4,000 metre square precinct, minimum precinct, which is intended for the provision of low-density residential development. The aim of the zoning is to provide spacious semi-rural living opportunities that are still close to urban services. While the proposal is for lots below 4,000 metre square, it's worth noting that in Garry Junction, land within the rural residential zone is already characterised by a mix of lot sizes generally ranging from 2,000 metre squares to 6,000 metre squares, which are not connected to sewer and rely on onsite wastewater systems. While the proposal does not strictly align with the intended lot size for the precincts, it is consistent with the relevant outcomes in the strategic framework and meets the overall purposes of the rural residential zone, which is to accommodate low-density living in a way that integrates well with the surrounding properties. Other matters includes traffic impacts, amenity, active transport and road upgrades, which have been assessed and are detailed in the report. This can be found in Attachment Two. The application underwent public notification and received 21 submissions, 19 of which were properly made submissions, all objecting to the proposal. The issues raised have been considered and carefully addressed in the report, seen, provided in Attachment Two. The report recommends approval, subject to imposition of conditions provided in Attachment Three. Thank you. This concludes my summary of the application. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions or comments by councillors, please? Councillor Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's noted that the detention basin is not adequate. I've looked through the, the conditions. Are we going to address that? When the stormwater and, and the out, the figures, when the construction is thought of, I don't see here where we've said, we've said it's inadequate, what's been submitted, but I don't see where we've rectified that in the conditions.
Thank you. I think there are two allotments set aside for that purpose, but please.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor. Yes, two allotments for, because the stormwater detention basin that they have proposed is undersized. We have recommended to remove two residential lots so that they are able to provide the appropriate size rest, stormwater detention basin in future. This depends on during the operational work, how the stormwater has been managed, how the works will be shown. More insights into this can be provided by our engineers, so Michael Evans can highlight more into this.
If I can just add to the officer's comments, in relation to the conditioning around that requirement to amalgamate the stormwater lots, if we refer to condition five of the recommendation, there's suggested amendments there required for the plans of approval, which includes the amalgamations of one, two and three lots for the purposes of the stormwater detention basin.
And the next question, thank you, I'm satisfied with that. And what's the size of the smallest lot?
2,500 metre squares.
So that meets our treatment plant, our minimum, doesn't it? Yeah.
Yes.
I, thank you very much. Thanks.
Yeah, just, just on that, I noticed that there's reference to L double A, the land application area, 400 square metres. But just, could you explain what, what, what relevance that is to the, to the sewer situation?
Thank you, Chair. I wouldn't be able to give more insights into that land application area. However, our council engineers can give you more insights into that technical details of that land application area.
Thank you.
Forgive my horizontal endowment.
If you would mind just introducing yourself.
Yes, of course. So I'm the new manager for development infrastructure and growth. So I oversee the team of engineers and infrastructure charging and strategic planning. So, thank you, Chair. The land application area councillor is defined through the Queensland Pummeling and Wastewater Code. So the minimum area is 400 square metres, which is defined within that, 400 square metres, which is defined within that code. That area is for onsite irrigation. So you have an onsite treatment plant, as you'd be aware, and that onsite treatment plant obviously requires effluent disposal. So we assess that area as part of applications that come to council during the domestic dwelling application phase to ensure that those areas are fit for purpose and compliant with the code.
Maybe I'm living in the past, but the, it was assessed that when you had treatment plants, you should have at least 2,500 square metres for a block, and that meets it in my mind. So thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor.
No, thanks, Matt. Client's bit also started this week and put him, put him on the spot straight away. Thanks, thank you, Matt. Other question, councillor Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Couple if I may. Could we bring the subdivision layout on attachment to, yeah. That's the one? Yep. Thank you. It's probably in the report. I'm, I'm not sure, but the contour lines on those lots, particularly to the north, held that, you know, the top end of that are pretty close. What's the, what's the fall? The grade of those blocks, do you have any idea of that? I'm asking in the context of small lot sizes for a start, that's not in keeping with the surrounding area. And, and also with the view to answer my question around inter-allotment drainage. This area has a a well-documented history of issues with inter-allotment drainage, and I'm just wondering, and, and with black soil too, it's.
Thank you, councillor. The slope within that northern lots is generally between 10 to 18%. These lots are larger in size because we, it is going to preserve the ecological significance of that area. There are some ecologically important areas within those northern lots. So those lots are kept larger in size to preserve and maintain those areas. There is a bit of a bushfire layer there. The applicant has provided as an ecological assessment report and a bushfire management report for those lots. More technical details into this can be provided by our council's environmental officer in relation to the
Yeah.
constraints in these lots.
Yeah, I'm more interested in are you, are the officers, the technical officers confident that we've, we're going to deal with stormwater effectively? I know the road's essentially the gutter. But given the topography, and it appears to be by those contour lines, a natural water course straight down through the, just to the west side of the north-south road of this subdivision. So, you know, are we confident that we're going to, because I can take you to plenty of places in, in this area where there is some real legacy issues, because it hasn't been dealt with on the front end.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, councillor. So two matters I'll touch on. So the first is the waterway, which you rightly picked up on, which traverses the northwestern pocket of that site. So the applicant has submitted a conceptual site-based stormwater management plan, which shows capture and conveyance of that upstream catchment to the north through lot 37, which you can see on the attachment, and then through a drainage system conveyed within the road network out towards the south. The second question which you had, which is around the grade within the lots. All of those lots grade towards the road reserve. So there's no design for interallotment drainage, which you typically anticipate where lots flow to the side or to the rear of a property. In this particular case, each one of those lots is able to convey gravity discharge towards the road network. Yep.
Sorry, I'm, I'm asking irrespective of whether it flows to the road or not, because the road, if there's enough, like I said, in this very same community, I can take you to other places where it flows straight across the road and into downstream neighbours' properties. And that's a fairly recent subdivision. So as long as you guys are confident that we, we, we're managing this, because it costs untold amounts for the general rate base to fix up something that wasn't done right in the first place. So if you guys are confident, we'll, I'll read that one. The other question I had was the, I couldn't quite make out whether the existing accesses that'll be connected through this estate to the east were properly formed up cul-de-sacs, or was it always envisaged that these were through access into this new estate? And probably a subsequent question is what's the likely traffic movements through existing, what I'd call rural res?
Okay. Thank you, councillor, through Mr. Chair. So the cul-de-sacs are all formed fully constructed cul-de-sacs, so they're constructed asphalt, possibly two coat chips here with curbing channel. So at the time, there wasn't really the intent for them to extend through. There may have been through the assessment of the original applications years ago, the intent that we build a formed cul-de-sac and then at some stage with that land being zoned, we would want that connectivity to occur. But I'm not sure what the original reports had at the time. So to answer your first question, as I currently stand, they are finalized formed cul-de-sac heads, constructed to a standard cul-de-sac design. Traffic wise, I can't give you exact traffic numbers, I guess off the top of my head, but you may see some traffic from this development that wishes to go east. They may go through Commonwealth Crescent or Panorama Crescent. It's just as likely, depending on where they are in the development, it'd be easier for them to just go south along their internal road to go back to Garry Tookonda as well. It's really going to be estimation based on driver behaviour and what they feel is most convenient, subject to where they sit within the subdivision.
Yeah, I, I'd imagine there'd be a bit of through traffic through that, because they'd be going back up to the school.
Possibly, yeah. The exact numbers, it's hard to gauge the exact numbers. There will be some traffic that will occur that way. But it depends on whereabouts in the subdivision you are too. So if you're the bottom third, it's just as easy to go out straight onto Garry Tookonda.
I, I gather some of the submissions, Chair, are without reading every word in relation to these cul-de-sacs being opened up.
Yep, councillor, they are. So during the assessment in consultation with transport planning, we did review what the traffic volumes would be going through and we're comfortable that they wouldn't be anything excessive or cause disruption to the lifestyle. I just can't cite the traffic numbers off the top of my head, sorry, councillor.
Any further, any further questions? Councillor Trevor?
Just clarifying with that retention dam, I notice on attachment D and attachment F down the bottom with, which is lot one, two and three, and then 900 written on that one. And then if we scroll down to the next one where the purple bits are there, that attachment one, two and three, I think, oh, not attachment, lot one, two and three is very different. So is that whole corner there going to be the retention basin? So they're going to lose three lots and whatever that other bit is?
Thank you, councillor. Well, the, the, the Thank you councillor. Well, the, the proposed subdivision layout is the updated layout. So this is not the updated one, it does not have the updated one. The one that, attachment 4, that is the most updated layout that we have for this. If we can go to figure 4, that's the updated version of this subdivision. So we have asked them to amalgamate those lots 1, 2 and 3.
So what's the 900?
It's a drainage lot.
That was the original drainage lot, and now we're going to take 1, 2 and 3 and take the whole lot as a retention dam. Okay, thank you.
Councillor James?
Yeah, thanks, thanks Chair. My queries or questions probably continuing a bit of a theme from what councillor Carl had before. And I know it's sort of pointed out a bit, but I think when you look at, if I can just get a little bit more of an understanding or an explanation, I think, around what's put in place to address, because you look through the submissions, there's a theme around obviously the increased traffic movement, how that impacts amenity noise, et cetera, et cetera. So what, was mentioned before that we're comfortable around it, but can I just get a little bit more of an understanding of obviously what is being put in place, because obviously it's a significant concern with the addition of this, you know, development of this site. So probably do, you choose.
Well, this proposal is for residential subdivisions, so it does not propose any commercial or non-residential uses or activities. So any impacts in relation to noise, lighting or privacy will not be anything beyond what we see in a residential subdivision. So this has been assessed and for, in relation to impacts during construction to the nearby sensitive receptors, we have imposed conditions which will mitigate those impacts in relation to noise, air and other things in related to, in related to the construction works. Does that answer your question?
Sorry councillors, just to add to that, within attachment 2 in the planning report, item 6 talks to the traffic and access component of which Panorama, Commonwealth and the other adjacent streets, I'm sorry, I've lost it there, are designed to accommodate and cater for, I guess, the expected generation that may flow through as a result of this onto those streets. Albeit noting, I guess there is consistency with the surrounding residential pattern of development through there as well as access out onto that main road there. So I think that the actual sort of spillage, so to speak, of traffic within the adjacent sites would be contextually within what we would expect to see, having regard to the existing amenity and location as well as capacity of those roads to cater for them, if that assists.
Yeah, thanks, thanks General Manager. Yes, that's, that's sort of where I was, where I was going, just there's an understanding, I think of that, because there's, that's obviously a considerable concern.
If there are no further questions, oh yeah, question, councillor Tim?
Yeah, thanks Chair, through to the planning. You, you did answer this, but just for clarification, there was issues raised about the effluent disposal and the 300 square metres, I think it's 400 square metres on every block to deal with their own effluent. That's pretty standard procedure across a fair bit of Toowoomba region, isn't it? Like Hodgson Vale, those kind of areas all have similar septic systems in place, don't they?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Well, the absence of any further questions, I'll call on the submitters. We have, to my knowledge, Matthew Reeves and Bruce Alcorn. If you'd like to come up here, thanks Matthew. Sorry councillor.
Chair, just noting, just as a conflict of interest, Matthew was a builder on my renovation at home. He finished three years ago, but just that I do know Matthew, he wasn't listed as an interested party on here. So I don't think it's going to affect my decision in any way, but I just want the room to know and if you think I need to go through the motions, please let me know.
It'll be noted, but you're not declaring any conflict of interest. Thank you.
Afternoon Chair, councillors.
Thanks Matthew, we'll give you five minutes each.
In, in relation to the concerns that have been echoed, the effluent and the roadways and that have been going through lots of numbers. I addressed the issues as they, they come up in the, the planning report. I addressed issue 1 and 2 together, the non-compliance of the lot size and the amenity impacts. And I counsel reference Koala Drive as, as rationale for the proposed lot sizes in the area. Koala Drive does have 2,000 square metre lots. The largest lot at Koala is 4,683 square metres. And surprise, not surprisingly, it is the main stormwater easement for that development. Of the 393 square, 393 acres that covers the rural residential development west of Home Bush, so it's RR2 and RR1, Koala is the only development that has blocks under 3,000 square metres. The development of Garry View, which is the west, and the Togonda Gardens, which was the eastern development around the proposed development, all have blocks over 4,000 square metres. We've got residential area, sorry, rural land above and below. I don't propose that they would ever be developed. Yeah, so Koala, as far as the consistency of lot sizing, Koala represents in that, that western area of, from Home Bush Road, Koala represents 4.3 of contribution to all land area of that residential. So I'd consider that it's not exactly indicative of the land sizing of those lots in that area. And quite possibly, I looked back through some historical aerial photographs and I see that Koala Drive was one of the first developments. It's likely that there was no diligent scrutiny of those developments at the time, could have been considered inconsequential as well, so. Yeah, so Togonda Gardens, Garry View, were all developed as 4,000 square metre lots after the fact of Koala Drive. I don't think that that's surprising, given, given the terrain. I, I would say that the Hilltop development, which is an extension of the Koala Drive, they have lot sizes down to 3,078 square metres. The stormwater easements over allotments in there are all over 4,000 square metres. This dovetails into the sewer and the on-site water treatment. I contend that the treatment areas are impractically placed on those maps there for the lot shape and the slope. So the lots 1, 2, 3, which may become a detention basin, 11, 12, 13, 14, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, have all been placed as far away as they can from the open stormwater drainage systems at the head of the, at the top of the streets. I'm not sure, I mean, you've got to, you've got to build what you've got to build, right? But it would seem that they've been placed in an impractical position to achieve the smaller lot size, but still maintain setbacks on boundaries and stormwater easements. I think given the, the slope and the soil type has been the reason why the lot sizes in these areas have been a lot larger. Hilltop and Koala quite likely were given the option to have smaller lot sizes because they have lower upstream stormwater influence. They have lower grade of site, which then coupled with the stormwater mitigates flow of potential contaminants from one allotment to the other or even off-site to other developments or rural land for prime agriculture. Which I'd like to ask Bruce now. He is the lot 447, the allotment below the development there, and he owns the agricultural land there.
Chair, councillors, councillors, thank you for your time. My name's Bruce Alcorn. I own the adjoining rural land to the, to the due south, lot 447 and a number of lots around it. As councillor Carl pointed out, it's, it's a, the topography is quite a steep black soil property with the centre of the property being fundamentally the drain or that, the, the way the water travels to. The proposed development, 49 lot development, will create a number of impervious surfaces such as roofs, streets, parking lots. And as one of the council members, representatives, engineers said, they're going to channel the water back into the, into the road. This will create a greater tendency to, of stormwater coming down the hill. And at the moment, we've got one retention basin. The initial application had none. It's got one now, proposed more. The discharge of the retention basin is straight across the road into the middle of my cultivation, prime agricultural land. The law says you're not, it's illegal to dis, it is illegal discharge, to have discharge point that it does not, is not within the standards of the infrastructure planning design scheme. Based on the stormwater calculator, there will be a mill of rain, for every mill of rain and every square metre of roof, there will be a litre of water. So that's just off the houses alone, 8,000 litres coming towards, towards our property with no mitigation. Once the retention basin full, where will it discharge to? It'll discharge through the discharge point, which is again, centre of my cultivation. It'll, it'll cause considerable erosion and irrefutable damage. The subdivision that was done years ago to the east, which was 107 Gary Togonda Road, he, the gentleman who did that easement, well the people who did that easement, had to do a rocked easement from Gary Togonda Road to the creek. And the law is that you can't discharge stormwater, water, excessive stormwater drain after a development onto a neighbour's property. And that's what this proposed. They need an easement to take that water to the natural water course, which is Gary Creek. Any address questions for me, Chair?
Yes, any questions to either to Matthew or to Bruce?
I've got one more point I'd like to address.
Oh, okay Matthew.
Just on the issue 6, the, the traffic. So I actually measured the invert, curb channeling invert of dimension of both Panorama and Commonwealth. Commonwealth has a channel invert to channel invert of 5.8 metres and Panorama has 5.9 metre channel invert dimension. In council's conditions, 91.1 requires all internal through roads to have a seven metre invert channel to invert channel width, which both Panorama and Commonwealth do not. The Panorama and Commonwealth roads are built in a way defined by condition 91.2, which is for cul-de-sacs.
If there's anything further, Bruce?
In my submission, I was there one morning and there was a morning storm. And the road became cut in two places from a morning storm. The school bus couldn't pass. It becomes a safety issue. Now we're proposing a 49 lot subdivision with insufficient stormwater drainage. Thank you Chair.
Questions councillor Bonner?
Yeah, thank you very much gentlemen, through you Chair. My question actually arises from some of the information that, well I have questions actually from both gentlemen, Mr Reeves and Mr Alcorn, but specifically to start with, Mr Alcorn, your points about the discharge point and requiring an easement and the volumes of water that you've, you've calculated. Through you Chair, could we have a council officer who considered this speak to those issues that have been raised, please?
Thank you councillor and through the Chair. So through the assessment of development, we obviously have to give way to the planning scheme. The planning scheme requires all development to achieve a lawful point of discharge, which is defined as the nominated point where stormwater can discharge, be that a water course, an easement, a road reserve. In this particular instance, the road reserve is the defined nominated lawful point of discharge. And the next step is the developers required to demonstrate that there's no adverse impacts or increase in flow to that nominated lawful point of discharge, which in this case is the road. And that's why the applicant's gone through the process of providing a detention basin, which obviously we're still not happy with in terms of sizing at this point in time. But their requirement is to mitigate flows to pre-development conditions.
A follow-up if I might, Chair. Well, just a quick one through you Chair. So with the additional merging of lots 1, 2 and 3 to expand that basin, is it council officers' position that, that additional, that will be sufficient then?
Through the Chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Carroll?
Thank you Mr Chair. I'm, I'm quite concerned about the stormwater discharge. I'd like to see, I'd like to have seen what was proposed to make the detention basin suitable on these plans and to actually understand how it was going to work. And for that, I've had calls from this area at 3 o'clock in the morning when it's raining, not here of course, but close, come out and have a look at the water that's flowing through their place. But we'll, the comment was made by Mr Reeves about the unsuitable placement of the irrigation for the treatment plants. Are we going to stipulate? I, I come from an area and I had a septic when I first moved there the first time in my life. Put it but 27 years. It's all in this sort of country, it's most important. A lot of people who buy these blocks do not understand what they're supposed to do and, and not, not understand how it works. And in today's modern world, the houses we built take up most of the land and they'll put them where the best outlook is and you can't blame them for that. But on, on this underlating land, do we and can we say where those, where that area should be? Because that is the key to whether it works or whether it doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you councillor and through the Chair. So there has been a report submitted as part of this application, which demonstrates that each of those lots is able to achieve the required land application area. But ultimately, you're correct, in terms of dwelling location, that governs very much where those areas are within those sites. And of course, there are those land constraints. So that's something that we look to ameliorate through plumbing and drainage applications as they come through each one of those lots. I know you mentioned the use and the compliance in relation to those elements. And council does have through its plumbing and drainage team an ability to annually check those treatment plants as well as part of audit processes.
Thank you very much for that, but you and I both know that, do you know if it's not in a suitable place and the area isn't, doesn't absorb, that it doesn't work and it flows and causes all sorts of issues. So I guess once a house is built, then when you start thinking about where you're going to put an irrigation area, there isn't always an area that's suitable for that to happen. I'm asking, I suppose, is there any way that we can ensure that? Because once a house is there. I, I've actually seen in my lifetime a, a, a treatment plant discharging over two blocks right next to it and taking a long time for it to be rectified, I guess. I'm just, I'm just thinking, in this, if it was all flat, it would not be such a concern, but it's not. We know that it's not. And the comment was made by Matt, I think, I don't know, but it's something that the longer you sit around, the more things you see, I suppose. So I've actually seen this happening and I'm just wondering how we are going to capture that. And once the house is already there, we're limited in what plumbing and drainage can do, with all due respect. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you councillor, through you Mr Chair. So prior to a house being constructed, they'll need to get a building certification approval. Before that can be issued, they actually have to have a plumbing approval first. So before any house will be built, they'll have to lodge a plumbing application with council's plumbing team.
So before any house will be built, they'll have to lodge a plumbing application with council's plumbing team. They will assess the suitability of the onsite effluent area, the location of it against AS thirty five hundred, I believe. And then they will compare that against the size of the house. So quite often what we'll find is if the house footprint is too significant for the size of the onsite effluent through the plumbing approval, they'll have to go back and reduce the size of the house to achieve a compliant onsite effluent. So that, yeah, prior, so through the legislation, they cannot get a building approval to commence works until they have a plumbing approval.
Councillor Bill?
Thanks, Chair. My questioning is sort of a bit further along those lines because I was very interested in your comments, sir, about the positioning of the designated areas. And I note, I raised that drainage, obvious drainage corridor down the western side of the road. And I noted some of those four hundred square metre areas directly over that, particularly the lot that has the existing house on it. So I, I'm concerned that, and the reason why I'm concerned and I respect the officer's explanation about sequence of events on approvals. However, we spent an inordinate amount of money, given the technology is dated, but we're still talking about onsite effluent treatment and designated areas and we're talking about exact same country, black soil. We spent an inordinate amount of money as a council retrofitting Kingsthorpe because of the issues with onsite treatment and effluent and septic. Given it's older technology, there is an absorption rate that is just not the same as red soil where I live. So I can't help thinking that we're trying to shoehorn too many lots in here that are somewhat disconnected. How far is it from this lot here? Anyone can answer, maybe the local gentleman. How far is it from this subdivision to the centre of Gary, say the school, the corner store? Two kilometres? So in the event of, and we know Gary will develop as a, as a satellite area. I, I'm just worried that we're, we're mixing and matching higgledy piggledy lot sized development where there, there needs to be. In my personal, I'm a layperson, I'm not the technical person, neither a planner or an engineer or a hydrologist. However, I feel as though we might be compounding some issues down the track when these satellite areas continue to come under pressure. And we've got to provide infrastructure to, in the future. And I give a classic example of Kingsthorpe having to be retrofitted with sewerage because of public health issues. So I think we probably need to think carefully about how we step forward. And I already raised issues, legacy issues around stormwater, across roads in Gary Junction and in Kingsthorpe. Two very similar communities and similar topography and soil type.
Councillor Trevor?
Just relation to the retention dam, what litrage size or whatever is the capacity of that dam?
Through the chair, I'm happy to take that on notice, but the initial reporting we had was around five thousand kilolitres of size. The conceptual information that we have at the moment presents one in three batters on some sides of the actual basin, which is not compliant with our scheme. Or as the officers noted, compliant with the requirements of the Queensland Urban Drainage Manual. So we'd be seeking to preserve, as I mentioned before, the, the pre-development flow rates based on that sizing, but on a compliant footprint, which involves the requirement for those additional lots.
Okay, so when that dam fills up, obviously it will flow out across the Tugonda Road there. Has there been any ideas of trying to stop the flow going into this gentleman's paddock? What ideas have been suggested for that?
Yep, councillor through you, Mr Chair. So yeah, that was a concern that was raised by the submitter, the landowner himself. And council officers saw those plans, they are concept plans with what has proposed currently with just the culvert discharging straight to the south. We've already advised and through the works, which the idea will be that the lawful point of discharge is Gary Tugonda Road, so they'll be discharging into Gary Tugonda to the southern side of the road on the table drain. But then the stormwater will go west along the table drain. So the design intent will be, it will not be discharging directly to the south. Initial discussions we have had with the designer P Q have advised that they believe they can fit a design for the culverts and then a structure within that tail drain to have the stormwater go west along Gary Tugonda Road. And they've advised through concept at the stage that the existing tail drain should have sufficient capacity. So those details we will verify through that at works and sure.
And works being done to that road will be at the cost of the developer?
Either the way, it is conditioned at the moment, yes.
Yeah, okay. And with houses being built on those blocks, is there a stipulation with council of rainwater tank size? Minimum, maximum, because I guess out there, most would employ tanks, but is there a minimum that we standardise?
Yep. Yep, so council has opted into one of the Q D C requirements that require dwelling houses to have a minimum three thousand litre tank, I believe.
So not very big at all?
No, I believe that is still rural res as well, I could be wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure it is still a rural res requirement as well.
Okay. With the lots that are all presented there, what have we got, forty eight, which will come back to forty five now? You guys are happy with that size of lots? Because it looks like lots on the adjacent two properties, of the two lot land holdings there are bigger lots. Would you recommend to go back to the developer and say you need to cut it by five or ten or something?
Thank you councillor, through the chair. The lot sizes are less than what is intended for the precinct and that's why it was subject to impact assessment. During the assessment, the impacts were assessed and it has been determined that the lot sizes are of sufficient size to accommodate a dwelling house and its ancillary structures. Also, during the assessment, it has broadly been determined that it complies with, broadly with the strategic framework and the overall purposes of the zone code. The proposed subdivision will provide for large rural residential lots, which is consistent with the rural setting, with the rural residential settings in the surrounding. Other than that. Bit more.
Can I just butt in there, sorry?
Yeah.
But initially you said they don't really conform to the surrounding areas that have already been established, is that right?
Yes. It is.
Okay, so what sizes should these blocks be? You've got two thousand five hundred minimum, six thousand five hundred max. What should the minimum size really be?
As long as it can fit all these, because it's an unsuited residential lot, as long as it can fit all the necessary infrastructures and the dwelling house. A size from two thousand to six thousand is sufficient for this kind of rural residential development.
But we're still not conformant, technically conforming with what we've got there now to make it flow through. I just have a query over the minimum size lots that we're trying to get through here.
There are a couple of other questions, but before that, I think, Mr Alcorn, just on that point of stormwater, might like to make a few more comments. You're well within your five minutes.
Just a couple of points to my gentleman to my right here. We don't know what, exactly what the water retention size was, which worries me. Because I tried to find in the document and it didn't have the size that detention basin. The other gentleman suggests we run the water to the west, that we're running water uphill. To my best of my knowledge, I haven't seen a lot of water successfully run uphill. And then there's no water course to drop it into. When that discharge overflows and cuts the road, you might say the developer is discharging accordance with his requirements. But it's then a safety issue because the road gets cut. And then the road water's got to go somewhere and then it ends up washing me out. So it's all very well to say the developer's compliant by dumping the water onto the road. And then it cuts the road, there's a school bus goes there twice a day, it's unsafe. There's photos in my submission of that water being cut on a, on an early morning storm, not even a, a, an evening storm, an early morning storm. The concentration of water is not being dealt with, the stormwater. Thank you, Chair, thank you councillor.
Councillor Edwina, then councillor Carroll.
Thank you, Chair, my question's not in relation to stormwater, so if there's others here that want to cover that off now while we're talking.
Just a follow up, there's very smart people in this world, it's much smarter than me. But if you had an inch storm or a two inch storm over thirty minutes, has there been any, I don't know what the word is, hydrology? Oh, I have no idea, what would happen if with all the houses there, with the streets done? How much water would flow into that retention dam? Has there been any studies on that or, okay, is gentleman up there nodding?
Thank you, through the chair. So as part of the DA phase, they submit a site based stormwater management plan that models the full range of design storm events. From what we call the Q two, which is the thirty nine percent A E P event, up into the Q one hundred, which is the one percent A E P or the old term, one in one hundred year flood. So the developer's required to mitigate all of the flows from their site to those levels. And that's the reason why obviously a basin's provided. So I appreciate obviously the submitter's got concerns about existing issues and rainfall and runoff. The developers required under the provisions of the planning scheme and under what's reasonable and relevant to mitigate flows from their site to those pre-development levels.
With that one to one hundred year storm event, is that retention dam going to be big enough?
Through the chair, again, that's subject to that additional modelling that my colleagues mentioned about operational works design. The initial designs that we have had submitted to us demonstrate that pre-development conditions will be met. However, we still have concerns around the actual form of that basin. And that's why there's that need to expand it further in order to comply with our safety and our planning scheme requirements.
Councillor Carroll?
Thank you. I, I'm not comfortable with the size of the blocks, with the disposal. But the other question that I'd like to ask, I have never sat here to make a decision on a subdivision with a detention basin not being shown and how it's going to be, are we running out of time with this or something? Why has this come to us without having the detention basin shown where it's going to be as this subdivision is, is being approved? Because in my twenty five years of council, that has never happened. And I'm not happy to take it on face value of what's there. And we say that it's the, that's the developer's responsibility to do this. And at once this is developed, then everybody else around it, if it's not, will put up with the impacts. And we'll get phone calls at three o'clock in the morning or something else, as we always do. And it's fine to sit here and say it ticks the boxes. I'm not happy about the effluent disposal in some of those blocks, not on all of them, because of the fall of the land and where it'll be. And I don't believe that we can guarantee that they're going to be, that they're going to work the way they should. And the second one, I'm not happy to, to commit or approve something that doesn't show me exactly where the water's going to go, how big the detention basin is and where it's sited. Well, we know where it's sited, but also the comment that the water doesn't run uphill, we all know it doesn't. So where is the water going to go? And there is a creek system that runs along, or a depression runs along that road. So I would have to say that I'm not happy with the stormwater all round and the, and the detention of the water. And I'm not happy with the way it's brought to us without that being shown.
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate the context of sort of the question and comment, councillor, and very attuned to the challenges that exist when there are conditions and recommendations within the report that require design changes to accommodate stormwater solutions. And I accept what you've said there. I think if I can perhaps simplify the thought process that the officers went through with regard to the way that condition five is put, which is the one that requires the amendment to deal with the stormwater. There is a strong level of comfort from the officers when we measure this up against the design, the stormwater design events ranging from the Q two to the, to the Q one hundred or the flood regimes that may occur and the stormwater discharge regimes that may occur over the site. Where the officers and the applicant arrived at a difference and the genesis of it being put before you in this format is there is very strong comfort from the officers that the volume of detention required to manage the flows is able to be catered for within lots one to three and nine hundred, as you see it on the, on the screen before you. There is a difference of opinion among the reasonable minds that exist about how that is provided. So we, we very much ordinarily wouldn't and, and I appreciate the experience you bring to that in terms of how these have come before you in the past. If there wasn't confidence, confidence among the officers assessing this and the engineers that we've got on staff, that that volume can't be contained within that area, we very much wouldn't have put it for, put it forward to council in this format. The reason that it is, is, is we need to arrive at a decision and hence the recommendation to deal with it in this manner. I suspect that it will be a conversation that is managed through the operational works process and the post approval frameworks that exist to deal with the very, very much how and the particulars on what that might look like. But if I can sort of stress the comfort that the officers have that it absolutely can be managed and that's the reason it's before you in this manner. The detail is what needs to come and we need to work through that. And that's why condition five is drafted in the way that it is, accepting the views around that as well.
Yes, councillor Edwina?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, General Manager. Appreciate that because that's one of my concerns too, with following from councillor Carroll Taylor. I also find it hard to, if we don't have the detention basin there and also the, the water discharge and overflow is clearly going to go east instead of west, given the, the landfall, so that needs to be considered. My question is in relation to what Mr Reeves said earlier in relation to the road culvert from seven metres versus nine, could you just?
Councillor's list of conditions, it might have been attachment three. Condition ninety one point one stipulates that all internal through roads in the development need to have a channel invert to channel invert dimension of seven metres. Belmanger Street in the Gary View Estate meets that, but the panorama and Commonwealth Crescent do not. They have a five point eight and a five point nine metre channel invert to channel invert dimension, which is as per ninety one point two condition, designed for cul-de-sacs.
Okay, thank you for your attention to detail. And so can a council officer please respond to that?
Councillor, through you, Mr Chair. So the difference in pavement width is coming down to a difference of standards through time. So the development to the east that has the narrow pavement width, it was under, for the time, I think it would have been the Ed Rock standard, so subsequent planning schemes that come through and standards have changed, the road hierarchy widths have changed. So that's why there is that discrepancy occurring is you've got a local road that's been conditioned to a standard for, in the current times, where to the east was historical pavement width. Our discussions with transport, we did a look at the pavement width to see whether we had concerns. And there was no concerns with the pavement width to the east.
So just confirming that you are comfortable that these widths meet the current planning scheme?
The widths to the east do not meet the current planning scheme, they meet the old standards. The widths within the current subdivision will meet the current planning scheme though.
Thank you.
Councillor Trevor?
How old is the old subdivision? Because the Ed Rock standards weren't that, I was sitting here, I was in another flower at that time, that's not the Ed Rock standards. But all these councils had, that's part of Rosalich, that former Rosalich, aren't they?
Yeah, okay. Apologies, so two thousand and four, sounds like the development was. If it wasn't the Ed Rock standard, the assumption would be Rosalie, so it would have been, yeah, correction, it would have been applicable standard at the time, depending on the council.
Councillor Trevor?
Can someone explain to me the main road that goes, I think, from south to north in that estate? Where it goes through stage one and strays through, stage two. The water will be coming down that street. The water will be coming down that street. How are you going to get it into the retention dam one, two, three, nine hundred? It's going to have to swing across that street there and water does not really follow directions too well.
Yep, councillor through you Mister Chair, so, um, there is an engineering plan, I'm sure it's there, that shows pipes onto the road that'll take the low flows. The way these local streets are designed, they'll take a Q two storm event through the gully pits and through your pipework. Anything up to a Q one hundred needs to be conveyed within the road corridor itself. So then design intent will be to run it down through the road corridor. Um, so the Q one hundred flows, the exact arrangement to get into the detention bay has, detention basin hasn't been finalized, but. What we would typically envision is there's likely to be. An offshoot that pulls it into the drain, the detention basin, or perhaps a sag gully pit there, so to pond there, then go over the road reserve into the detention basin. We typically don't get into that finite detail assessment as part of an R E L, it's higher level proof of concept. In saying that for a bit of comfort, so when we, we do look at D V values, so depth versus velocity values through the road. So that when the Q one hundred flows are going down this road, especially because of the topography of the road, we do investigate how. Your depth of your flow water along with your velocity, so ensure it's within safe parameters in line with what Q U N recommends, so ensure pedestrians or people aren't swept off their feet.
Uh, councillor Bill.
Thanks Chair, um, through you, Mr Reeves, is it? Reeves, uh, or the, the, the property, the, this gentleman here that owns the, the rural block to the south, just a question for you. You, 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 um, raised the issue of a, a morning storm and the road being cut. Um, you're talking about that Gary Tilgonda at that, uh, along the bottom there, along your property, neighbouring your property, is that correct?
Yeah, through Chair, yes councillor, that's correct, it was cut in two places, one just left where the road's going to come out now.
Yeah.
And the other one to the join of the two subdivisions there, where, uh, just on the western side of that retention, proposed retention basin. So it was cut, the photographs were in the, in my submission.
Forgive me, um, I, I haven't seen that, but, but, um, but the reason why I'm asking is just if, if it was. Further down relevant to existing, um, development or not, but it appears that it's, it's not, it's directly related to this. Uh, and I'm asking in the context of, um, we have natural soakage on that lot right now. But we have a hell of a lot of hard stand and impervious layer, uh, at the, as a result of development, so. Um, hence my concerns and that I raised initially about. Slope and fall and, um, inter allotment drainage and how we're going to deal with it, so. And we deal with it to a, as been adequately pointed out by the officers, a certain level, Q one hundred. And anything above is, yeah. Anyway, so, oh, you've clarified my question, thank you, it's, it's cut in two places and it's directly. Um, opposite or in, in relation to this lot.
Yes, yes, I'd just like to say, to the council points of view, to the, the, the representatives on the council. You, you don't happen to live there and you don't see the storm and you won't wear the impact of the erosion. And the deluge that will come down when those retention basins are full and it can not accommodate it and it spills into the cultivation and it's not made. And it's easy for you to sit here in your council office and say that, you know, and disregard the question from council. But they were pertinent, very pertinent points by the councillors, thank you.
Councillor Tim.
Chair, thank you, um, I, the, Mr Reeves and Mr Alcott have, have raised the stormwater. Issue and I'm hearing loud and clear, my question is actually for the officers, for our, is that appropriate to ask our officers at this point? Um, I, so right now you've got a hill. And water runs down it when it rains, right, so if I, if I look at. The conditions attached to this, uh, and, and often they're fairly generic in nature, but. Is it possible to get conditions thirty seven and thirty eight up? That's in attachment to, uh, page five of sixteen. I just want to chat, so, so, so right now we've got a hill, right? And this will be cut up into a subdivision which mirrors what we've been seeing on the screen. Then you go to each block owner owns, you know, should we go to that stage? Owns their little patch and so they have to then, if I'm reading this correctly. Apply for operational works on their individual block to make sure thirty eight. That all stormwater infrastructure necessary to convey runoff from roof and developed surface areas. Any runoff at all onto the subject land from adjacent areas must be approved, so is this, we approve the subdivision. Then the individual owner, like, I'm not getting ahead of ourselves, I'm saying in theory. Do they then have the onus of through the op works process through this council, making sure that their block is covered? For stormwater runoff, is that how the system works?
Councillor through you Mister Chair, so, um, the intent of the conditions in the R E L are. For managing the development's construction, so should probably note there is a typo, sorry, it says runoff from roof, it's not really, it should just be, uh, surface areas, so. We don't regulate roof water approvals.
That goes into the pod here, right?
Yeah, yeah, so there is, so, it's a couple of stages, so under the R E L approval, we're regulating. The road construction, the stormwater, providing all the infrastructure associated with the subdivision. Um, then the future house owners will come through, as parting a building approval, the building certifier has to then ascertain as to whether they trigger under the local laws in our planning scheme. And it works for the stormwater crossover or not. Um, traditionally, if we have inter allotment connection, they'll just plug straight into that pipe and there is no op works required. Um, so apologies, that, the word roof is probably, is a typo in that.
No, but they still have to prove op works for every single block to make sure there's no runoff.
Um, not necessarily, no, so they, if there's inter allotment pipes, they'll plug straight into it.
Well.
Um, if they're discharging to the street, they have to get a, an op works for the pipe crossing the verge, but we don't regulate internal stormwater for houses. And that comes down to the building certifier certifying and approving it.
Sure, when you get blocks that are minimum twenty six hundred up to four, four and a half or whatever it is. Do those blocks generally get levelled or does the, uh, low density rural res, do they just work with the slope that they've got?
Um, it's, I guess it's ultimately up to the landowner and builder at the time, they could opt to do a equal cut fill pad with retaining walls, they could do a pole house. The way the scheme is set up is they are, they can have a bit of freedom of flexibility for the house construction. There is subsequent other, like if they were to go through and they decided to, uh, do an equal cut and fill, there's triggers for the earthworks that would either trigger an op works for, or further op works. Or the building certifier would have to approve that earthworks through their approval.
Thank you, can I just have one more Chair? Um, Mr Alcott, I, your concerns are very valid about right now the water runs down the hill. And, and in my five years here, I've dealt with a lot of legacy issues concerning infrastructure around Gary Kingslaw area. Uh, and, and the, the money that we've got to spend now to, to fix those issues, so I'm, I'm, I need to see this done right. And of course now as it sits, um, water runs down the hill into your block. Um, I, I just wanted to talk through like the, the thirty seven there. Which says all land adjoining the development. Must be protected from bonding and nuisance from stormwater for the life of the development, does that give you any comfort at all or you, you think, you know? To where we've ended isn't good enough?
To where we've ended, to, through the chair, councillor, no, none whatsoever, they've given me no confidence in what they've been able to present today. We, we're trying to approve something, we haven't even got the retention basin correctly marked, we don't know what size it is, we're trying to run the water uphill. As one of the good councillors said, the water actually easement, the water of course is actually to the opposite direction. So how well do they know the land, the, the planning department? So, yeah, this will be a legacy issue, I've seen the water already and, and there's no way this development application is dealing with the stormwater runoff. It's, you cannot do something in life that adversely affects somebody. I don't go onto someone else's property and I don't expect them to come onto mine and I don't expect to throw my rubbish on their property. Or my stormwater on their property and neither do I want theirs. There'll be contaminants in that water that affect this, this rural land that I have. It's, it was a dairy farm, a, a choice dairy farm for a number of years and, and this single development is going to change the landscape of that area. And couns- some councillors here know that area, councillor Carol, um, councillor Carol, they, they know that steepness, the effects of the black soil. It, it will, it will discharge water. I can accept the way it is now, but I can't accept you creating all these impervious structures. And just talking to, as long as you discharge onto the road, that's all we care about, it's the next fellow's problem. Well, the next fellow is me and it is a problem and it is your problem because the road is there getting cut. Thank you Chair.
Thank you for the answer.
Thank you, um, just, I'm not too sure whether it's thirty seven or thirty eight because it's not adjoining. Land that we're talking about, it's land across the road, isn't it?
Not joining to our offices?
Okay, I'm wrong, thank you, um, yeah, councillor Bill.
Oh, just to comment, I think I've sat through a few of these where that wording is consistent and rather, um. Um, repetitive as far as requirements, there are a list of standard requirements. And I hear the gentleman's concerns because we have many problems that have had lists of standard requirements. Um, so I, I do hear your concerns, so. And they, those standard requirements have been around for quite some years.
Any further questions, uh, Mayor?
Thanks very much Chair, thanks, uh, Mr Alcorn and Mr Reeves, appreciate you coming along and. And putting forward the, the case of locals who live there, so thank you for that, do appreciate it. And I guess we, we will hear from the applicant shortly. My question was more about, uh, what we're actually doing here today, which is the reconfiguration of a lot. It, it seems to me that it's the next phase where a lot of the things that we're speaking about today. Will actually be the most critical. And that's where I'd like the applicant to direct their attention to. Is the fact that all of those things and I totally get, what we don't want to do is approve. A reconfiguration of a lot, which will then enable a development to take place. That has a worsening effect on adjacent properties. We can't do it, it's against the law, we shouldn't do it and we won't do it. Uh, what we have been given from officers is, um, a level of assurance. That at this stage of the process for a reconfiguration of a lot, there are ways, engineering ways in which that can happen. The push for me is what will happen and that's what, that's what obviously those that live there are more important. That's what's more important, what will happen, what will happen on the ground. And that's where I'd, I'd like assurance that. If this does get to reconfiguration of a lot, if it does get to that point, um, that. Those residents that are in that area, who know the area, understand the flow, where it goes, because that's what's missing in a lot of. Discussions that take place here is that we don't get the local knowledge as well as we probably should. Um, there would be an opportunity then to think about like. You know, it's, it's, it's interesting, but, you know, Mr Alcorn knows the area well, knows exactly where the roads cut. And so for me, if I'm the applicant, if I'm the one doing the development. I would be making it absolutely sure, even when I get to this point, that I've addressed that within this application. That doesn't seem to be the case on behalf of, of those that are here in the submitters. So my question is probably more to the applicant. Is to actually work out a solution that gives surety that this can be a better result. The best scenario, if I could share, would be that that road never gets cut because of this development. Which is actually improvement to what it is now. That would be the best outcome and would set a precedence for the rest of the developments that happen in this area. It may cost a bit more, but it will certainly be a saving for communities down the track in five, ten, fifteen years. When we're doing what we're doing now on a monthly basis, which is revisiting legacy things that have happened. That would be the best outcome and so I'm keen to hear from, from the applicant in regard to those couple of things.
Okay, yeah, any further questions? If not, uh, thank you, uh. Just one final comment?
Just, just break one final comment and, and this is not to throw stones, but, um, if you take, uh, consider, uh, East and West Creeks. Throwing through the centre of Torma here, um, and development that, um, occurred, Middle Ridge and, and beyond, um, prior to two thousand and eleven floods. We did have detention basins in place at that time and they obviously failed under, uh, heavy pressure. We obviously don't want that to occur here, I mean, smaller blocks, it increases the hard stand, um, density. Um, lower density, like larger blocks, lower density, we're obviously going to reduce, um, peak flows and velocity. Um, so, you know, we, we don't want to see something out there like we had two thousand and eleven in through the centre of town.
Thank you, Mr Reed, Mr Alcorn and officers, uh, thank you, um. Well, give an opportunity to the applicant, if the applicant is present, uh, to, uh, make a submission, thank you.
Uh, good afternoon councillors and officers and thank you for your presentation this afternoon, as well as for the, um, submitters' time in terms of the issues that they've raised. I think of, uh, rather than, uh, recounting, uh, or, or just, uh, doing a complete presentation on the proposal itself, maybe making the most of the time that we have with responding to. Obviously the questions that have been raised and discussed this afternoon. I think, um, some, perhaps summarising those, um, working through lot sizes, obviously the approach to stormwater, which is a, a key consideration. Um, effluent disposal and, and traffic, um, so in relation to the lot size component, um, and going, uh, to the queries around acceptable lot size. Yes, the, in, to be a code assessable application, the acceptable lot size is four thousand square metres and that's what you've seen, um, in an application lodged to the west. This is in, the Torma scheme obviously is part of a performance based, um, planning, uh, system where. Uh, we've then, uh, along with the applicant, considered yes, some context in relation to Koala Drive, um, around. Uh, some, some precedent in terms of lot sizes that have been established. Um, but also, um, within the performance planning framework, what lot sizes can be achieved that still, that still result in a. Um, an average lot size of twenty eight hundred square metres, um, with widths of around twenty five metres or greater. That allow for an outcome that is, makes efficient use of, of the land within our, our current context, but also respects. The residential character of the area and can still achieve those things, um, that are, uh, consistent with a rural residential area in terms of the, the size of house. The type of outbuilding and amenity that people will, um, expect within this area. Um, and we believe we've been able to achieve that, um, but also those other, demonstrate those other requirements in relation to. Amenities, so traffic onsite effluent disposal and stormwater discharge and, and all of those things haven't been, um. Uh, pulled together without detailed consideration, so if we look at the stormwater component, um. The, a detailed stormwater assessment that is completely typical of an assessment process that we go through in day in, day out has been produced. And the stormwater report has been, been put to council, um. In relation to the, the, the basin becoming, um, larger, that is something that was raised in the, in the. Um, report that we've seen in terms of the conditions that have been put forward, so, um, our, uh, or the engineer, the, the certified engineer for the applicant. Um, believes that the current size that is at lot nine hundred is able to accommodate the basin, council, um, engineers have a different view and. Um, we respect that through an operational works phase, if, um, through additional detailed modelling, in addition to what's been done today. Um, that condition now allows for the basin to be made larger, if, if indeed it needs to be. And for the lots to be removed, if indeed they do need to be, and so I think that is, um, not a, a typical of an assessment process. Um, and is something that we are able to work through and then demonstrate with confidence through operational works. Um, that there is a design outcome that will deal with the lot sizes that have been proposed. Um, remembering that there is an underlying expectation this land is subdivided for rural residential development, whilst council scheme may say four thousand square metres. There is an under, which would result in, if, if that was a layout, it would have a very similar road configuration, so. The issues we're talking about aren't just related to the fact that there are lot sizes less than four thousand metres, they would apply to a development of this site irrespective. And the work that has gone into the stormwater design, um, demonstrates that. Or produces a, a quantity of, of storage that is reflective of the lot sizes that are reduced, which then have assumptions in relation to. The number of dwellings as well as the road area that is proposed. Um, I think in relation to the, the, the discharge of the, of the water and, and Michael could speak to it in, in more detail, but. Survey has been done to demonstrate that grades can be achieved, so, uh, completely respect local people's, um, views and, um, on. The, the local area, but again, there has been detailed work done and to your, your point, um. Uh, Mr Mayor, in relation to the work that has been produced, it is, it is being produced to a level that is consistent. Um, with the development application and recognises that further detailed design work gets done in operational works, which is, which is standard, once there is an impractical agreement that is. is, which is standard. Once there is an impractical agreement that is produced by council, and we have conditions that we can then design to, then further detailed design is done, which gives us a further opportunity for the council's engineering team to be, then be able to have another review and confidence that the discharge can be achieved. If we're not able to achieve that, we can't comply with the current conditions, and the development wouldn't be able to proceed through a planned ceiling. So really, the, the risk of that runs with the applicant, that the, if we weren't able to achieve discharge west, then we wouldn't be able to progress the proposal further. And so to that end, work has definitely been done by our consulting engineers to be able to give a level of comfort and confidence to the applicant that they will be able to achieve a design outcome that works. And equally, the measures that council talks, that are referring to and the conditions that they're bound to around stormwater discharge, as are our consulting engineers. They can't produce a design that would result in stormwater that would then discharge directly onto a downstream property without an easement. So they have done that work. They're aware of the issues. They're aware of the submissions, and they've done that work to be able to produce a design that they believe can achieve compliance with council's conditions. In relation to onsite effluent, again, there has been an effluent report produced that included soil testing and the like, so it is reflective or acknowledges the local ground conditions. The areas that we, that we're shown aren't final, and to councillor Carol Taylor's point, yes, there will be some movement on that, and purely to the point that Michael explained, that we can't predict the size or location of all future dwelling houses on the, on the site. But we do go through a process to prove up, to demonstrate that the, the areas are adequate for the slope and also the ground conditions. And then prior to a building approval being granted, council through the plumbing and drainage team will have the opportunity to have final say on its sizing and its location. With respect to traffic, I think it is contemporary planning practice that, that through roads are extended, and we achieve a more permeable and legible design. And so, yes, there is, there'll be a tie-in between an old standard of road to a new one. That's quite common in other areas through Twamba where we're bringing road, road standards up to the current. I think, and the point was made, but each of the local roads under the current standard is designed up to 75 lots, from memory for the added metre width. So when we, when we work through that, those roads, I think, have around 30 lots that are coming off each of those. So we're not even at 50% of the capacity of those roads. So the roads are designed to current standard. They're designed to deal with the traffic volumes that would result from the additional lots that are proposed here, which when we compare what would be under a code proposal to this, we're talking about 14 additional homes or 14 additional families. So we're not talking about a significant volume, and we're not talking about anything that pushes, pushes us over a threshold where the road network's not able to accommodate it. Double check those effluent traffic capacity and lot sizes and stormwater. If there was any other matters that the councillors would like to ask, I'm happy to take questions as well.
Councillors, any questions to the applicant's rep, councillor Carol?
Thank you, Mr Chair. James, thank you. I was looking for, for confidence from you, but you've said if indeed the detention basin needs to be bigger. That hasn't filled me with confidence at all, when our people say that it does need to be bigger, and then you stand there and trying to reassure us that if indeed it needs to be bigger.
So I can provide some context to that, councillor. So the, the conditions obviously were made available to us when, at the same time, effectively, that the reports made to the councillors, we've immediately sent that. So we weren't aware of that there would be a condition to make the detention basin larger. We had had some discussions with council staff in relation to the concerns raised in the submissions. So council staff definitely have been engaging with us around the concerns that were raised during the public notification period. So the, the reason why I say that, councillors, we didn't have the, the opportunity before this meeting to be able to resubmit documentation to council, but we have done that work. And our RPQ engineer has done the assessment to be able to actually model up spatially the detention basin, including batters, which I think was the concern. And they're, they, what they've produced shows that can fit within Lot 900. So...
Sorry, just, so the follow-up is that you, and this is why I, we, we're being asked to make a decision, and this is the only time we're going to have to make it. It's not just a reconfiguring of lot at all. This is us making decision on this subdivision. So we're told that the 900 can't accommodate it, and then you're getting up there and saying that, yes, it can, and you don't agree that there needs to be a larger detention basin taking up those other three lots. And we're asked to make a decision with that conflict between our advice from our people and your confirmation that it will fit on 900.
I don't think that's a conflict. I think the way that the officers have addressed the condition gives council comfort and confidence that if the, the RPQ engineer who's produced the drainage design for the applicant, if through further detailed design, we don't believe it's going to be required to be any larger than it's already shown, and it can be a compliant design based on what is shown. But what I'm saying is that if council, through detailed design or through operational works, still require the basin to be oversized or larger, then the condition gives you the flexibility to be able to amend the design through what works, and then have comfort that there is a design that's agreeable to council engineers. So I'm not saying it doesn't work. Our RPQ engineer has done modelling and through the same level of detail would be required for any other application, has established that the drainage design as shown works. It's not unusual for then conditions to be included in RAL approvals, where council engineers have a different position on what the, on what the design may need to be, and that is resolved through operational works. And that's, that's completely standard.
Councillor Tim?
Chair, thank you, James. I'll form the same question that I did to the submitters. Legacy overland flow issues around the Gary, Kingslaw areas is an issue for this council, and we want to make sure if we're going to do these kind of things, we do them right to start. And so I suppose you've got drainage easements, roads, pipes, detention basins. I just want you to talk about your modelling that you said you happened with our council officers. Can you satisfy me, issue thirty, or condition thirty-seven, that all land adjoining must be protected from ponding and nuisance from stormwater for the life of this development? Can you satisfy me that your work on overland flow is going to keep that condition indefinitely?
And so obviously, I'm not a, not a civil engineer, but in terms of, I can talk to the process that we've been through. So a civil engineer, RPQ, has been engaged to design a stormwater management solution to what is required under the council standard. And the council officers, who are technical specialists, have considered that report and agreed that with some design amendment potentially, that there is a, an outcome here that can satisfy the required standard that we need to be held to. And I think in relation to the ability for the proposal to meet the condition that you're referring to there, that condition applies irrespective of this development approval being granted or not. Someone, to the, to the point that the submitter raised earlier, we can't, a future applicant or existing person here cannot just go and change the nature of discharge of stormwater across to another person's property. So there are protections that are inbuilt irrespective of this development approval being granted. So if anything, I think the conditions that are, that are proposed give it an added layer of protection to what exists now. So all I can say is that we've been required to design to a particular standard, which we should be, and that our assessing engineer believes that that standard has been achieved. But there is a further detailed engineering process that will be completed before any works can commence on site, and that will be, have as much rigor and council will have opportunity to make requests for information as part of that process with Michael and his team.
Thank you for your answer.
Councillor Trevor?
Thank you. Thanks, James. When your applicant first bought this block of land, did he, she do a scenario of how many blocks they could fit on at 4,000 square metres, which is concurrent with blocks on east and west of that development? And how many blocks would have you fitted on going around that 4,000 square metres? Because at the moment, you've got 48 lots, so that's question one.
Yep.
Question two. Are you willing, as the applicant, to forego Lot 1, 2 and 3 to fit that detention dam on, as per our officers?
So I, I, just given the, the timing that we were brought into the project, I can't speak to whether there was a pre-assessment, I don't know what is code. I assume that there would be. But in terms of just working through the, the net developable area, if you apply 4,000 square metres to the net developable area, it's around 34, 35 lots that you would achieve as 4,000 square metres. So originally, we were looking at somewhere, I guess, compared to the code accessible outcome of 14 extra lots, as an impact proposal. That's obviously under the current conditions, potentially comes back by two. So we're talking in the order of the 12 lots, 12 houses, 12 families. And we've gone through the impact assessable process because we think there is merit to that. In relation to the second query, I think the, the obvious response is that if we can demonstrate that what is there is satisfactory and can achieve a stormwater management solution that is to the required standard, then the, the preference and the most efficient use of land is to retain it as three residential lots. If that can't be done, then council has the comfort through the existing conditions that they will be amalgamated and there will be a stormwater detention basin. So I think the, the natural response is that we will do the additional work through detailed design to be able to prove to council, engineering staff, that the layout can work, as we believe that it can in its current form. But council, through its conditions, has inbuilt some, some safety that if that, through the assessment process, council engineers maintain their current position, then they will have to be amalgamated, and there will be a reduction in lots.
Thank you for your response. To me, looking at this, we have to have conformity because that is a steep incline there. I know it quite well, because I used to frequent the property across the road many years ago when it was a Jersey Stud. So I know that layout of the land there quite well. Would your applicant be prepared to go back and start with 4,000 square metre lots? Because I think it's going to be a lot easier for you. Honestly, my personal opinion.
I think I'd just go back to the, this hasn't been something that's been pulled together without, without consideration. And so working through, we're able to achieve an efficient use of the land in terms of production of lots that are required in a way that still maintains and reflects the rural character. And so that has been given consideration to earthworks, building paths that can be achieved, onsite effluent disposal, stormwater, all of those things. So I think our, our position is that there is context for the lot size already within this area of being less than 4,000 square metres. And what we're proposing, whilst it's less than 4,000, it can still maintain rural character and amenity, and it can integrate effectively with what is east and west of it.
Councillor Gary?
Well, yeah, if anyone's done op works, all the questions we've been asking today are all covered in the op works. And, you know, if we're not going to believe in REIQ engineer report, why do we bother asking for them? So, you know, it's...
Thank you. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
For your presentation. Sorry, yeah?
Going forward from here, if this was approved today, what happens with the officers up there? Where does it go from here today? If it wa, if it's not approved, where does it go?
General Manager?
Councillors, regardless of a decision made here today, what that decision may be, there are appeal periods offered and afforded under the provisions of the Planning Act to all parties because it's impact assessable through the, whether they're properly made submissions, or, or naturally the appellant themselves. Assuming that process was traversed without an appeal, in, in whatever form, if the council were minded to approve the development, we move through that process. The, the detailed design exercises, as spoken to at length today through the operational works process, would commence, and, and further assessments and applications would be lodged by the proponent to satisfy council officers with regard to compliance with the conditions, as well as the relevant standards that exist. If council were minded to refuse the application here today, and we traverse the appeal period through that, the development would not take place.
Nothing further there? Go to councillor Tim. Seconded by councillor Edwina. The motion is that the standing orders, best practice example, standing orders for local government and standing committee meetings, last 2024, be reinstated. All those in favour? Carry on. Thank you. The item to be decided is that the council approved application number RAL 2024 18, sorry, 8165, for a development application for a development permit for reconfiguring a lot impact, reconfigure one into 46 lots, excuse me, pursuant to the provisions of section 60 of the Planning Act 2016, and subject to the conditions contained within attachment three. Is there a move for that motion, councillor Tim and councillor Gary? Is it necessary to go into debate?
You've 48 lots up as six, and then down the bottom, you've got 46 lots.
General Manager?
Through the chair councillors, if I may talk to that, that reflects that amalgamation component of condition five.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor?
Apologies, I should have done this just a moment ago. Item number 38 in the conditions, the officer said that the words, the word roof was a typo. So we would, I presume, want to correct that and amend it so that the word roof and was removed. So it says convey runoff from developed surface areas. Is that, is that what the correct intent of the officer was?
I, I agree that it was, in my view. Did we make that a part of the motion? Is it necessary to do that?
Getting nods.
Yes, it is. So we'll add to it after the words attachment three, that the, you might have to help me there, the word roof?
Condition, it pertains to condition number 38 under stormwater drainage, and the words roof and deann would be removed, so that the entire condition would read, all stormwater infrastructure necessary to convey runoff from developed surfaces, and any runoff onto the subject land from adjacent areas must be provided in accordance with the development permit for operational work.
I have no issues with that.
Sufficient for your purposes, just with the, to have the word roof removed?
I think it's, sorry, Chair, but it's roof and. But just to confirm that that is what the officer said, is that correct through you, Chair, to either the general manager or the officer?
Through the chair, that's correct. Thank you.
Nothing further rising up? Councillor Bill?
I'm just waiting to debate, Chair.
Okay. Debate is required?
Yes.
Okay. Speaker for the motion.
I think I've got to propose it first, don't I? Oh, good. No.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Colleagues, there is a motion on our books today. We find ourselves, when you zoom out, in amongst a region begging for more land, more housing. We have a SEQ regional plan that says this area, we must find a way to significantly increase our housing in this area. And I've said it three times today, that I do loathe the fact that we sit around this table and often have to spend money on legacy issues such as overland flow around the Gary and Kingslaw mountain areas. And so to vote on this today, you'd have to be satisfied in your own mind that we have done enough to condition this housing development, so that those issues are sorted. So colleagues, there are issues of sewer. I propose that the individual and every single lot, personal, you'll give me the technical words, sewerage treatment plant has been used, and there's an attachment that hasn't yet been brought up in the figures that shows the location of that in each site. The sticking point for me is the stormwater that you'd also need to be satisfied has been adequately conditioned. I'm confident... I'm confident that the conditioning and the words used by engineers is sufficient to make sure that there is no overland flow or adverse effects to neighbouring properties, which is a huge issue and I'm convinced it's been conditioned appropriately. So colleagues, I I do find that we have engineers, both for council and both for the submitter, the, the developer who have come to an agreement on the engineering and I'm certainly not going to sit here as someone who hasn't got an engineering degree and tell them their engineering's wrong. I think this can be conditioned appropriately. So colleagues, you'd need to be conditioned, you'd need to be convinced rather that the sewer and the stormwater can be adequately conditioned as they, I believe has been, and I welcome debate on that.
Speaker against, councillor Bill?
Thanks. I do respect the technical experts' advice and that's exactly what it is, advice. There's been lots of advice that have left legacy and that is not a reflection on any individual. It is the standards and rail tracks we need to run between to conduct planning in this state or be part of that process. Sometimes I wish we weren't part of the process. The, the postconditions are often eroded away with a negotiated decision notice. And postconditions are only as effective as the ability to be able to police that and make sure that they're carried out. And we know that council doesn't have those resources unless there's a legacy issue that presents itself. And it immediately becomes a legacy issue when you have a constituent ring and say, we're being flooded. Or you have complaints, as I've alluded to in Kingslaw of commensurate lot sizes where the standalone treatment systems, albeit older technology, but it's same soil have expired and we have a public health issue. Because the transpiration trenches and other, other treatment plants there on same lot sizes were unable to deal with sewerage. So whilst we have these guidelines, I think it comes back to how we carefully carve up. And I don't accept the, the notion that, you know, we, we need more land, we've got clearly demonstratable and there's been extensive work done on priority infrastructure areas and land availability. It has nothing to do with council when that land is brought to the market to be subdivided for houses. So the, the, the areas that I raised around inter allotment drainage on I have some reservations and, and neighbouring, near neighbourhoods that suffer with that. But in my view, it's generally inconsistent with the surrounding lot size and amenity of the adjacent properties and adjacent land. And despite our best laid plans and history convicts us, and I always say that, we, this raises the potential for future public health risks given the increased density of standalone treatment plants in this soil typology and the collective impacts of the potential expiration of those expiration of those standalone treatment plants. And it's no good saying they don't, they do. We've got proof of that. So then we've got the collective impacts of providing urgent, critical infrastructure to these frame areas of which Gary Junction is a frame area. And where we have enormous stress and strain on budgets, not just now, but moving forward. Because we choose to in the, in the, the so-called requirement for extra land and houses, we choose to carve that up in an inconsistent manner which brings forward potentially burden of infrastructure that may not have been required as early to address issues. So, and I do, officers, thank you for the, the amount of work and thank you, James, for your presentation, but yeah, when you sit around and, and you do a few circles here and you, you weigh up the ifs, buts and maybes, I, I don't think that I feel comfortable enough to support. I could support this land being divided for residential development consistent with 4,000 square metre lots where you have the ability to change your designated area for class B or class A, is it? Class B pump out area because your lot's big enough to actually move the plant or readdress those issues when the current footprint expires in black soil. But below that, it's a challenge. And that's even a challenge on a red soil lot of two and a half thousand square metres. So thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Councillor. Now for speaker four. If not, I'll ask councillor Tim to sum up.
Thanks, Chair. And can I acknowledge councillor Bill's viewpoints on there? Colleagues, I propose to you that we live on the great dividing range of Australia, an area littered with hills and escarpments of varying sizes and degrees and I dare not say you can never build on a hill because of the water that's going to flow off it, because we've managed to condition many, many, many times really good outcomes for housing on the side of hills across this region where we've managed to condition overland flow and sewerage issues. And I don't propose that this should be any different. I just want to also point out that every single master plan I've seen, whether it's a park or a housing estate, you get the master plan and then you get the detailed design and then you get the operational works. And there are two other checkpoints perhaps to go through for officers and for individuals buying those lots to make sure that these things are conditioned before the subject we're at now. I've never seen a park look exactly like the master plan at this stage. There's always room for movement to make things done better during the building stage and this is no different. I, I do want to pick up on the idea that we shouldn't do this because there's a lack of policing in council offices for when things go wrong. And of course, it's not about cutting corners, it's about doing this right, conditioning it right the first time so that we don't need to fall back on those positions we have in place as a council. But colleagues, we, we did massage the issues through and I'm convinced, and I'm sure you're all convinced, the issues with sewer, stormwater runoff and block size have been adequately addressed. I will pick up on the block size, I'm on the books. Going in when block sizes are too little and I propose to you, there's a difference between four fifties and two thirds of an acre at 26, 2500. Distinguish those arguments as a different case in this point and with that, Chair, happy to move accordingly.
No, thank you. The, the motion is up there for you to read it, it's been read out before. For what it's worth, my own concerns are for the housing shortage issue, which you're well aware of from previous discussions and my concerns for what would happen here. What, what happens next if, if the motion is not, not carried by, by way of the matter being dealt with in another place? So having said that, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Eight in favour, which would leave three, those against? Three against. Sorry? Yeah, the, the motion is carried before concluding, sorry. The vote recorded, sorry, yeah. That's the, those setting, is that okay? Yeah. Councillors, Carol Taylor, Bill Carl and Trevor, and Typle against. So before concluding the meeting, could I thank those who have participated in the presentations at length today? And I hope that notwithstanding the result, the submitters would be, will take some reassurance out of the presentation from the officers in particular as to what, what follows from today on. Thank you very much for your attendance.